All right, it is seven o'clock. We will start this meeting. Welcome. It is August the 8th, 2024. Welcome to the Kaysville City Planning Commission Meeting. Our agenda, item number two, Declaration of Conflict of Interest. Does anyone on the Commission have a conflict of interest in any of today's agenda items?
No.
Okay. Next item on the agenda then is the oath of office for our new planning commissioner, Katie Ellis.
All right, Katie. Yeah, you should be getting to it. Come on up. All right, if you're learning that slide. The way you just had to repeat after me. Come on over here.
It's easy. You can cheat and read. It's open book.
Yes. Okay. All right, Anne. There we go. I, Katie Ellis. I, Katie Ellis, having been appointed to the Office of Kaysville City Planning Commission. Having been appointed to the Office of Kaysville City Planning Commission. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support. Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States. Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Utah. And the Constitution of the State of Utah. And that I was charged with doing in my office. And that I was charged with the duties of my office. Congratulations. Come on up. Right here. Not by mistake. Starting official.
Fantastic. Welcome, Commissioner Ellis. Next up, we have a 2024 Moderate Income Housing Report from staff.
Thank you, Chair Packer. So I just wanted to give a brief overview of the moderate income housing requirements that the city has to meet as well as the reporting process. Over the couple of years that I've been doing this here, a lot of times, the public will have questions. So hopefully, anyone who's watching at home, as well as here in the audience, can get a better understanding of this as well. The report was due August 1st. We got it in, and by we, I mean me, but with the help of staff on some of the elements that we needed to report on, I got that in the day before. And I think I won the prize of submitting it from the longest distance away, as I was in Amsterdam. So State Code 109A 403 has provisions of what a city, a municipality, or a county has to include in their general plan. Over the last seven or eight years, the state legislature has modified this and started to include moderate income housing portions. And so I've got some quotes here from State Code that just says that cities, as we go through our general plan process, we have to consider the legislature's determination that we will facilitate a reasonable opportunity for a variety of housing types to meet the needs of people in various income levels, working and desiring to live in our community, and then to allow people with various incomes to benefit from and fully participate in all aspects of neighborhood and community life. So we adopted our last, our most recent general plan in August of '22. And then we revised that in November of '22 in order to meet these new compliance requirements that the state has put in. And if you do, if you go and look at State Code, this 109A 403, it will list a menu of items that we have to select from to include in our plan. And a city of our size and with, because we don't have any fixed transit stops like a frontrunner station, we are required to submit at least three items. And along with that, we have to include in our general plan an implementation timeline, as well as implementation measures. So there, there's 26 items that cities and counties can choose from. They're numbered A through Z. When we went through this process, we kind of automatically eliminated about half of them because they just don't fit the community of Kaysville. So the planning commission and then the city councils, they went through this process. They chose to incorporate these following items into the plan. We have H, J, HA, J, and N. So to, let me get my mouse over there. So as I said, we have to, we have to commit to the state and say, here's the timeline that we will work on these items. And we have to put implementation measures in. And if we come back and say, yeah, we committed to do this in '24, but we didn't do it, the state will find us as noncompliant. If we come back and say, we didn't, we did it in '24, but we didn't do these items, they would probably find us as noncompliant. This item H, we completed early. And I submitted in the modern income housing plan that after the code was adopted, we actually did do a parking reduction on a project here over by where the new Taco Bell is, just off of 400 West, and in between that and I-15. So I reported that we implemented that parking reduction this year. We have this objective 1.3 that says we'll rezone for densities necessary to facilitate the protection of moderate income housing. Again, we put a timeline. And because we don't rezone property on our own, it was hard for us to say, hey, state, we will do this in a certain year. Because we only process applications that we receive. We don't solicit applications. We don't actively go out and rezone properties while we can. It's just not a practice that we have. So there were, let me just scroll through these others. Okay, I'm having a hard time with my, there we go. So here's our others. We have F, zone for rezone, higher densities, near commercial centers, mixed-use zones, that type of a thing. And then we also have this implement mortgage assistance program for our city employees. And just as a side note, during my discussions with Mr. Carling, previous to him submitting the application, and then some of the comments he made in the meeting last time about providing $30,000 to the city to use towards this type of a program, that was a discussion that I initiated with him. It's something that our elected officials felt like was important to provide opportunities for our city staff to work here. I think it's great to have city employees living in your neighborhood, police, fire, you know, parks and recreation staff. And Kaysville is really not an affordable place. So that is one of the reasons why Mr. Carling offered that. And as I have had conversations with other developers, I have mentioned the same opportunity. So, and we will continue to work on this item, as we committed to in our timeline. The main place that we will find the funding for such a program would be from any redevelopment agency funds. The state requires, if you have a redevelopment or a community redevelopment area, that you commit 10% of all of those tax increment finance funds to affordable housing. So that's where we would get funding for that program. So then, just how the reporting works. So if you look at State Code 109A 408, the modern income housing report is due annually on August 1st. We have to report on each item that we have in the general plan. And then we have to report on each application that has come in that's relevant to each item. We have to report on the action taken for each item. And then the Department of Workforce Services has a housing department, and their staff would review for compliance the actions that we took. They look at the steps that we committed to in the general plan, and they determine whether or not we are in compliance. This has been a challenging process with the state. The first time around, there were multiple cities that were found noncompliant because there wasn't a copy of word for word from State Code into their general plans. So this has, this has been something that really has been building for a few years, including the fact that, you know, when we first started to have, to put this moderate income housing in place in, I can't remember, it was 2017 or 18, there were no penalties. The report honestly was a little bit meaningless. So this has been evolving over the last several years. And part of that evolvement has been the state saying to municipalities and counties, we don't feel like you're doing enough, and there's no teeth in what we have been doing in the past. And so they have then put in code that there are noncompliance penalties. One of those penalties is that we could lose funding that we have received. That could be funding from UDOT for road projects. That could be funding from any state organization. It could be funding, we received $140,000 grant to do a small area plan on our downtown area. If we were found noncompliant, the state could come back and yank that funding from us. They also could say, you're not compliant, therefore, you're not eligible to apply for these certain types of funds. They had implemented also a fine that this year is $250 per day, but going up to next year, it would be up to $500 per day. So this is something that the state legislature has felt like is important enough to them that they put these regulations into place. And then as staff, we work to try and keep the city in compliance. And then again, we report every year. So the 2024 report was included in the packet. So if you want to read the entirety of the report, that is in there. I just wanted to go through real quickly. But again, the state has all of these questions that they require us to answer, describe each action taken between the last year reporting period to implement the tasks in your plan, and the actions that support the county or municipality's effort to implement the strategy. So again, every application that comes in that could possibly be associated with moderate income housing, we have to report on to the state what the application was, what the action was, including staff recommendations, what the outcome was. So, right, this last year, we reported on this mixed-use project that again is going over in between 400 West and I-15 that'll have some, a hotel, it'll have some office space, some retail space, and then 132 apartments. So two buildings with, that are three stories, and then the 132 apartments. We also had a small mixed-use project that was approved. And then, of course, I reported on the beginning of this application that we'll speak about earlier or later this evening with the Carling rezone. So take that as another step further. I go through the report and report on every strategy that we included in that plan. So the state will take the next three months or so and review all the information that we submitted. And they'll come back, I believe by the end of October, with a letter of either compliance or noncompliance. My belief is that we will be compliant this year. I don't feel like we're in any jeopardy of that. But honestly, this is a work and project or process. The state is new at this. The cities are all new at this. And any outcome is possible. So I just wanted to give that overview. And, you know, this is, this is a very difficult thing, I think, for cities. I think it's a difficult thing for elected officials. And, you know, we understand that there's these issues in the housing crisis. We do want to do our part and remain compliant. But some of, some of the requirements that the state has put on cities and counties is very challenging. So if anyone has any questions, including the planning commission, we're always here as staff to answer questions. If the public has questions, you can call and come in. If the commission has any questions on the moderate income housing report, I'd be happy to try and answer those tonight. But just wanted to give a real brief overview. And, you know, in the next August, we'll report on the 2025 report.
That's a lot of work in there. We appreciate how much work that's probably been. Have, have cities been found? Are we still in that beginning where cities are not yet being found noncompliant? Or have fines been assessed? Is that?
Well, so, so let me say this. So two years ago, the first year that they changed the reporting process to this different report that I shared this evening, it was pretty much a disaster. I think there was 92 cities that had to report. Only 20 of us were found to be compliant. I was, we were one of those. Last year, I don't believe there were the compliance issues that there were the year before. There also in State Code, there is outlined a process to become compliant. So there's a curing period. So the state comes back at the end of October and says, hey, Kaysville City or Syracuse City, you are noncompliant. Here's why. Then you have a period of, I think, 90 days to be able to remedy that. And if you don't remedy it to the state's satisfaction, after that time, that's when those fines would come into place. You know, and frankly, my goal as staff is to make sure that nothing I do puts us into noncompliance. So an example could be that the state sees a rezone application fitting the moderate income housing requirements. And if the city council in the end chose to deny it, and what they have said, that they wouldn't accept public clamor as a justification if we didn't have good reasons to deny that, I think there's a good chance a city, whether it was us or another city, would be found in noncompliance. That hasn't happened yet, to my knowledge. But like I said, this is, this is kind of, I mean, the cities, we're all guinea pigs right now. And frankly, the state, this is new for them as well. And so I would expect that every year, they will continue to refine and change the moderate income housing sections of State Code. It's, I don't think there's a year since this has started that they haven't modified that code. So, and some of it honestly has been things that they have done for the better. But like I said, this is, this is a challenging thing. All of the colleagues that I have spoken with that, you know, have jobs similar to mine or in the planning for, this is, this is a source of, of great effort, a lot of frustration. It's also important, and we want to be compliant. But at the end, you know, it's, it's really the state's determination of whether or not we're, we're compliant.
Could I just ask, I, I thank you for your hard work on this. This is not an easy requirement to comply with. And I appreciate the effort the staff has gone to, to put this together. I know how hard this is. And I just have a couple of questions going through it. Just, just, you know, enlighten me a little bit. On page two, it says, we have, correct me if I'm wrong, it says, we have 220 total dwellings that have been entitled, but have not yet pulled a permit. Is that correct?
Hold please. Okay. Thanks, Mindy. So yes and no, Commissioner Alred. So we have 220 total dwelling units entitled through a development agreement. So that is the Holland Mixed Use Project, the Creekside Commons with the hotel just right over here. That's the small mixed-use project that had six units at the corner of 200 West and 200 North. And then just north of Smith's is Flint Acres. And that has, I think it was 82 units total. And that's the, there was some multifamily, some town homes, and then some single-family lots as well. So, so that totals up to 220. Now, if you add that, so the bottom paragraph on that page says how many single-family lots that we have. So we have 324 single-family lots in the city that are entitled, that do not have a building permit pulled for them. So in total, we have, let's see, 544 units, residential units entitled in the city. And again, some, what the state is asking for us to report is, you know, what are the barriers? Why isn't this happening? Why, why, what's the market response to these changes that you've implemented? And it was very interesting for us to pull the data. And I want to thank Anne for her work on this, as well as Josh Dexter and Curtis from Public Works, as they looked at these lots and counted them up and tallied them. So there's 127 lots in the city that are owned by water conservancy districts that probably will never have a building permit pulled on them. So that's a definite barrier to the housing market. That, you know, that's 25%. Actually, it's more than 25% of the entitled lots that we have, or the entitled dwelling units in the city that we have that will probably never have.
Why is that? Why is that?
So my understanding is that those lots are being preserved for the future, if it ever were to happen, transmission line for the Bear River Water Project?
I just read recently, I think that one's been shelved permanently. It's what it sounds like. The Bear River Pipeline is not going to happen now.
So Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District and Salt Lake County Water Conservancy District own the lots. And that, that could very well be the case.
Yeah. So they've actually gone through a subdivision process, both of these? All these lots have?
The 127, yes. They are, they are lots that have been through, we only counted lots that, or residential units that could have a building permit pulled on them tomorrow. So those are all, those are all lots, I believe, every single one of them should have curb, gutter, sidewalk, road, utilities stubbed into the lot. So there's, you know, again, just with the single family, there's 224 lots where a permit, they all came in tomorrow, we would, we would do a planner review and issue a permit.
That is a staggering figure. And in my opinion, as a planning commissioner, these numbers are going to weigh heavily on my mind as we consider every single development going forward in terms of density, rezone. That is an enormous amount of, of development sitting out there where they could come in tomorrow, and you'd probably have to hire building, extra building inspectors, contract people to handle the growth. The reason I bring this up is because it's quite shocking for a city of this size to have so many developable properties that aren't actually underway right now. And I suppose there are a few different reasons for that. But I am, I am really surprised, if I haven't made that clear already, that there's that much development ready to go. But I am encouraged by what I read on page two, which is that we have about 220 are entitled that are non-single-family. If I read that correctly, is that correct? So out of the 500-something, we've got about 220-something that are non-single-family. So that would be around 35, 40% of total developable, permit-pullable properties that are multiple families. So I think that's really a step in the right direction. So that is really eye-opening. Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I would anticipate, we have been through the preliminary plat process on both Flint Acres and Creekside Commons. So I would anticipate that Flint Acres would get their final plat application. And in fact, something may have come in while I was out of town, just via email, not an application. So I would anticipate that both of those projects will be through the subdivision process. And hopefully, I think in their eyes, probably breaking ground next spring.
Thank you again.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Would we report on any rezone with higher density, or would it just be a rezone with a potential for moderate income housing? So anything that would be a potential to produce a moderate income housing product. So when I, I specifically called Alyssa with the state and asked this question in early July and said, you know, I've, I've had conversations with developers saying, hey, would you consider R-18? No, we want to do R-114, which is about a third of an acre. Do we need to report on that? Because it's going from agricultural to residential. And the response from the state was, only if you feel like it can be argued that the product in the end would be moderate income housing. And that's just not going to happen with third-acre lots or more than that. It's, it's very challenging. In fact, I think Mr. Carling will share during his item. But it's very challenging to have a lot when you have to put in all of the infrastructure to be affordable.
Right. I think any single family is going to be.
Yeah, even 8,000, 6,000 square foot lots will be a challenge. And, you know, and let me say this, too, that part of the reason why the state is now having us report this information about the entitled units is because over the years, they're, they're, you know, the Home Builders Association, the developers, the big players in housing in Utah go to the state legislature and complain about how awful all the cities are, and that we're not doing our job. And cities are saying, well, look, we don't, we don't build homes. We don't control market prices. We don't control land costs. And so we started pushing back as well and saying, look, we have all these entitled units out there, and developers aren't building them. And right now, some of that reason is because interest rates are so high. Single families' homes are not being submitted for permits as fast as they, or as frequently as they were a couple of years ago. There's developers that are saying, like, we're just going to hold off on this project because we don't want to carry the high interest rates to build the project. I've even had developers that have said, don't record our final plat, because we don't want to pay taxes on each individual lot. You know, so, so there's a variety of items that come into that. But as I was saying, we started coming back with our main kind of lobbying agency, the Utah League of Cities and Towns, and saying, look, we have all of these entitled units within our community, and they're not being permitted. They're not being constructed and built. And so, you know, that was, I think, a good barometer for the state legislature to see that, look, we have, and I think, I don't know if it was last year or the session before, but there was the number that was said, look, there's 33,000 entitled units in the state that are not being built or constructed. And that's not anything a city can control. I mean, we, we have a planner review process, and we review plans efficiently and quickly. But we only do that when they submit for a permit. So I think it was eye-opening for the state legislature to see, look, we are doing our part. There are opportunities out there, but developers and builders just aren't following up with things on their end.
Well, maybe a little bit further on that. Part of the rationale, or part of the reason why it's being required now to be in this moderate income housing report is because those numbers were bandied about. But apparently, some of the communities were using numbers, saying that for property that was zoned for residential use. And so development community was taking exception to the, characterizing those as entitled lots, ready to be built upon. They hadn't been through any kind of a subdivision approval process or anything else, some of those. So there was a difference in the way cities were looking at it. And so what they wanted to do with this reporting requirement now is to actually say, those that have been subdivided and are ready to be built upon, report those numbers. And that's what they want to get.
Yeah. And actually, earlier this year, as they were doing the annual training, there was a lot of discussion amongst participants about, wait a minute, what is an entitled unit? Because in Because initially, my understanding from the state is that they would have wanted us to count all of our raw land that even would be zoned agricultural. We allow dwellings on agricultural. So, if we have five acres of A5, that's one unit that we would need to count. They, in the end, I think, ended up being a little more practical than that. And, and two things. One, kind of saying, like, "We'll let each city decide what they define as entitled unit, units." But secondly, here is some guidance as to what that would mean. So, if it hasn't been through a subdivision process, we didn't count that. If there was a subdivision that had been approved, but none of the infrastructure was in, we wouldn't have counted that. So, these are what we reported, build-ready lots, or build-ready projects.
Just to put a finer point on what you just said, and this housing shortage is really a multi-headed monster. But I volunteer with our local Home Builders Association, the Northern Wasatch Home Builders Association. And we're trying to facilitate discussion between the cities and the contractors, cities and builders and developers. And it's really a worthwhile effort because there's so much miscommunication out there. And by trying to facilitate the contractors talking to the cities, what we're trying to do is speed up the construction process because there's such a housing shortage. But let me tell you a couple of things that have come out of those discussions over the last few months with the home builders and the contractors. There is a city in Weber County that has over 2,000 entitled attached units. Not single-family, but they are attached. Townhome, condo-type development. They have over 2,000 that could be built tomorrow. But because of high interest, labor shortage, there aren't, there are not enough hammer-wielders, concrete, concrete-smothers, you know, insulators. There just aren't enough people in the construction industry here. And the other one is the cities literally don't have enough inspectors. Some cities do not have enough inspection crew to keep up with the amount of buildings that are going up. And so, there's a logjam with, at both the city, at some cities, and with the contractors. So, we can't blame the whole housing shortage on, you know, NIMBYism, which is a major problem, as we know. But it, it goes deeper than that. And so, to be fair, even if we can entitle, you know, we can rezone and entitle stuff, we still have to have other things come into play before development can happen. And those are some things that have really come out of my discussion. I thought that everybody was interested in that. But a lot of the reason the contractors aren't building are for those three reasons. And, well, in the cities. Yeah, and sometimes the contractors aren't building because they're saying, "Cities, I can go out and build it, but it takes me a week to get you to come out and do an inspection on one unit." And so, and that there are not enough inspectors in this state. And it is going to be an increasingly bigger problem every year. There are not enough people going into inspection. So, it is, it is such a complex problem. But a lot of it does depend on the factors that we're required to report on in the housing report. So, thank you again for allowing me to, to convey that.
Sure. And if I can just add, we have been fine in our building division with a number of inspectors. And the, we have, I mean, we don't track this information. So, this is more of a, just a kind of, what's the wind breeze out there? But we would suggest and believe that 99% of the time, we get a next-day inspection or for sure within two days. So, we're not one of those cities. I feel like we are adequately staffed with our inspectors. However, there have been times in other places that I've worked where that has not been the case. So, it is a multifaceted problem. Another thing too is, you know, challenges with supply chain. And right now, if you need a transformer, which we all do, and you bring new power to a project, those transformers are anywhere between a year and 18 months out to order. So, we keep, our power department keeps some in stock and tries to kind of anticipate what will be coming in, what those needs will be. But it is, it's not just, and that's been some of the frustration, at least initially, is that it was a lot of finger-pointing. In fact, most of the finger-pointing at municipalities and counties, just saying, "You're not doing it." But it is a very complex problem, multifaceted. And frankly, it's been one that has been building for, for years and years and years. And, and not only in Kaysville in Utah, but throughout the rest of the country. Just because we have had this focus on single-family homes and, you know, urban sprawl, and, and all of that just drives prices up and consumes the land in ways that make it difficult to, then when you do get to a certain point, to have that affordability level.
All right. Let's move on to item number five, conditional use permit for Simply Done Right Electric, Major B Home Occupation at 188 North, 650 East for Rick Inman.
All right. I feel like we need to take a deep breath. That was heavy stuff. Our, this item number five is for Rick Inman. He is here this evening. He is a former business owner here in Kaysville and is returning to continue his legacy here. Would you say that, Rick? Yes. Long live the legacy. So, he is wanting to, he has proposed an electric company. Him and his son have the permits. They've gone through Doppel. They're licensed, an apprentice electrician and a master electrician. They, him and his son both live at the home that you can see. So, you can see, it's right there on 200 North. And there's the home. They've got plenty of parking. However, there's not going to be anything more than a work vehicle that will be coming in and out for, for services. There will be no supplies dropped off at the home. They will have a few things in the storage room in the basement. But the home is mainly used for logistics and office. We did have one phone call come in. A neighbor was just curious as to what the sign was in the front yard. It was just simply just, once I explained to him what it was, they were happy to find out that they weren't apartments. So, apparently, an owner before had tried to, or turned it into a duplex illegally. So, they were relieved to know that it was a home business. So, staff is giving, we're recommending approval of this conditional use permit at 188 North, 650 East for Simply Done Right Electric. With any conditions, planning commission filler necessary. Findings for our recommendation, it is consistent with any other contract business that we have a home contractor. It should not bring any adverse effect onto the neighborhood. And they are very aware of what a major home occupation is and plan to stay compliant with it. The applicant is here. If you've got questions, and there you go. Yes?
Is this a public hearing?
No. It's a, yeah, just a conditional use.
Then I have a question for staff. And for, just for all of us. Can I suggest that these items are routine and non-controversial? And that literally, we should not be bringing these to the planning commission? This would be a, a cutting of red tape that I think would be in order. There are no employees coming to the home. There's really no vehicles. I mean, I, I look at this and I go, sending a notice to the neighborhood to say somebody's applying for a home-based business is even over, this should be an over-the-counter approval, in my opinion. So, I'm asking a question of staff. Do you, do you, as staff, feel like this should be coming for the planning commission? Because I don't think there's anything for us to really review here.
Staff agrees with you, but the city council does not. So, we worked on a text amendment last year to make conditional use permits, administrative approvals. And the city council was not interested in approving that. In fact, it didn't even make it onto the agenda, if my recollection is correct.
Wow.
Yeah, Paul, we, as, as Melinda says, we, we suggested that. We made that recommendation, and it did not succeed.
Well, this isn't the first time I've suggested this, but I would hope that our council member in attendance would maybe take this message back to the council that in terms of cost, in terms of effort of staff, and in terms of maybe, you know, I think when you alert the neighbors about something like this, you can kind of get them all stirred up and to think, and that rumor mill gets going. This is really routine. This kind of stuff, if you want to make better government, streamline it, this stuff should just be over the counter. And if it's more invasive, I mean, if somebody wants to have customers come to the home, or, you know, piano lessons, or something that's year-round, I can see that. But this is routine and non-controversial. There's, there's no reason to bring these here.
Yeah. And I, I do want to just state that the council's concern was transparency and that they, they wanted to, and it's kind of the same thing with subdivisions, but they wanted the public to have an opportunity to be informed and to comment if, if they so choose to. But there is a misnomer with these conditional use permits that, you know, the belief is that we approve them or deny them. And the reality is that, you know, 99% of the time, we cannot deny them. That's how case law and state code has worked, that this is an administrative approval. And we are only here to determine whether or not additional conditions need to be applied to that particular use. So, you know, in the end, although I, I don't feel like this is a good use of our time, it delays the process for people seeking a business license, especially if we have a meeting cancellation, a lack of a quorum, a license could be delayed, you know, even six or eight weeks. And that could be a lot of, you know, income loss for somebody who's wanting to operate a small business. So, you know, but in the end, I respect the decision that the council has, and this is their prerogative, and we implement that. And alternatively.
Diplomatically stated.
What was that?
Diplomatically stated.
Well, alternatively, as we start, you know, going through our code sections, right, we can transition some of these conditional uses into permitted uses.
Yeah.
It would be interesting, I think, for the public to know, and for the commission as well, we really don't get complaints about these businesses. Very, very minimal, yes.
Well, we had one a couple, a couple of months ago where the contractor, and I, and I think this is the interesting part about these contractor, as a Major B Home Occupation, contractor falls within that on our city ordinances. Contractors, in most situations, are using these homes just as a home business. But if you remember, we had a conditional use permit come, and the guy had trailers and trucks and cement forms and, you know, and he was using his property as the storing facility for all of this. And we did receive a lot of feedback from the neighbors. So, if, if it were to not come to us, I do think there are things, it's, because the neighbors are going to see things that us as staff and as commissioners, you guys, we wouldn't be able to see because we don't see them coming in and out all day long.
I still think, I still think that makes staff toothless, though. Because staff, you're trained. You're professionals. You should have the ability at the counter to say to that applicant, "No. Nope. Can't give you, can't give you an over-the-counter on this one." If you want to appeal our decision to the planning commission, great, then it can come. But still, I think overall, I mean, you, thank you for your candor, even with a council member here. I'm not shaking in my boots by speaking up and saying, "We shouldn't have these at the planning commission." So, if there is no public hearing, I'm willing to make a motion.
Let's do it.
To approve the conditional use as reviewed and recommended by the city staff. And based on my findings are that the staff has reviewed this thoroughly. And I, making the motion, cannot find any level of impact on abutting neighboring, neighborhood properties that would require any kind of additional conditions to be placed on that. So, I recommend approval based on the staff report, with nothing else to add.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion. We'll start the voting with Commissioner Allred.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, and I'll just say, Paul, you're preaching to the choir.
Yeah.
Hallelujah.
You know, this, yeah. It's, there's another body we need to convince as well.
Yep.
Aye.
By the way, post-vote, I would like to make one last comment. For those of you who may not know, I was a city planner for 32 and a half years. I did this for a living, what Melinda and Mindy and Ann do. So, I'm a bit opinionated about proper procedure and process. And this is one of the things that I learned along the way. I'm not trying to be overbearing. It's just common sense. So, for what it's worth, that's why I come from where I come from.
All right. We'll move on to agenda item number six, conditional use permit for swim lessons by Krista, an instructional home occupation at 2247 West Summerfield Way. Take it away.
All right. Thank you. So, this is what we call an instructional home occupation. This is a newer business classification that we have here in Kaysville City. Two years ago, it was brought to planning commission to create an instructional home occupation. We had a resident that was running a swimming school out of her home and wanted to expand. It was a great business model, and many were wanting to continue swimming lessons. However, her student, or her instructors were teaching lessons in other people's homes, which, in order to have a major home occupation, it has to be your home and your business. And so, we, staff created, it's what we call an instructional home occupation, which allows for outside instruction to come to your home if you have a swimming pool, if you have a pickleball court, if you've got a basement with musical instruments and you want to teach a variety, whatever, sewing lessons, you name it. These are what we call our instructional home occupations. And so, Krista applied for this. She is a swim instructor, however, she's a swim instructor without a swimming pool and needed a swimming pool. And Jill Derrington, Mr. and Mrs. Derrington, are the owners of this home on this property right here. And if you hit the next slide, these eyes are so lucky. They've, on to the left of their home, they've got an indoor swimming pool. And after speaking to them on the phone, they said that it's underused, unfortunately. So, Krista has come in to save the day, and she is going to make sure that this pool is well-used. The beauty of that is that it can be used throughout the year. Krista plans to do lessons on Saturdays here at the home. And she'll either do group lessons with up to five students or private lessons. As you can see here in the green sidewalk, so that people can walk in, it flows very easily. And then, from the street view, you can see that there's plenty of parking. When I went to go put the sign up in front of the home, you can park three cars there. And then, there's plenty of parking for the students to be there in the driveway as well. The Derringtons have given their consent or permission to use the pool. They're aware of, of the situation. We did not receive any phone calls regarding this application or for this conditional use permit. And we are recommending approval for Krista to do swimming lessons at 2247 West Summerfield Way with any conditions that you guys feel are necessary. And the applicant is here for any questions that you might have.
All right. Do we have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
We're all afraid to say anything. Just kidding.
A motion to approve?
I, I have one quick question. Do we have in the code restrictions on time? Like, if I wanted to have a lesson at midnight?
Um, there's no, there's, there's not anything as far as that. There is noise ordinance.
Okay.
So, you would have to stay within noise. The noise, I believe, has to stay within your property. It can't go outside of your property for that noise ordinance to be obeyed.
But if this is indoor, that's a non-issue, right? Pretty much?
Yeah. I, I didn't see this being an issue here. I just had the question pop up in my mind, so.
I, I had written down the same thing until I realized it was an indoor pool. And then, I went, "Who cares if they're having a lesson at 1:00 in the morning?" If, if the neighbors can't hear. If, if the neighbors can't hear splashing the pool, I don't know what difference it makes.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be a problem.
Yeah, I don't either. So I, I just decided, okay, I'll, I'll make a motion if nobody else wants to. Somebody else wants to, I'm, I'll allow substitute motion.
So this would be the only restriction on time that we have in the code. It's just trying to schedule in between courses so that there's not a stack up of traffic.
And we got 15 built in, right? Okay. Well, I will, I'd like to continue on with my motion. I will make a motion to approve the application in front of us for swim lessons by Krista on the Derrington property. And I, before I continue on, just like to say, I think this is really creative. What a great, what a great thing. I got a pool, you can provide lessons. It's a great, it's community service. Things wonderful. But again, I don't think it needs to be here. But I will make a motion to approve per the findings and the recommendation of the staff. I think you did a good job reviewing this and I, I think, I see nothing to, to, I see nothing negative here. So that being the case. Motion to approve as presented by staff.
I'll second that.
All right, we'll start the voting with you then.
Aye.
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 I'll finish your approval for your business license and then I'll send you a letter for your conditional use permit. You should be good to start on Monday. So, thank you.
All right, next agenda item, conditional use permit for Elysian, Elysian Construction LLC, a major home B occupation at 314 West 100 North for Thane Ents.
That, that application withdrew at the last moment.
Say again?
It was.
Oh, withdrawn. Oh, okay. I actually, I actually had something to add on this one.
All right, then we'll move on to an application and public hearing for a rezone at 579 South Main from PB Professional Business District to a general commercial district for Aaron Gomez.
Thank you, Chair Packer. So this rezone application is for a property on the east side of Main Street. The applicant is Aaron Gomez and the property is owned by Kaysville Main LLC. This parcel, it's about 0.179 acres and it was previously used as an office space by a business called Wasatch Action Coach. And my understanding is that that business has not maintained their license. It's been inactive since 2022. So this has become, you know, an available location. And this site has actually been rezoned previously in 2017. It had been changed to our healthcare district zoning to allow for an adult daycare and then was changed back to professional business, I believe in 2021. So it has had some back and forth. But as far as surrounding land uses go, it's, you know, it is located right next to DTC. There's primarily, you know, residential districts surrounding it, R110, R18, things of that nature. But on the, on the whole, the general plan really does support this rezone to general commercial. The future land use map shows actually that specific parcel as commercially zoned. And both the land use chapter and the economic development chapter of our general plan both stipulate integration of new developments, new small businesses, especially in a smaller scale in residential neighborhoods. And both of those will be enabled by this change to general commercial. In terms of permitted uses, it, you know, widens the variety of uses by a relatively slim margin. Professional business allows for businesses and professional offices. General commercial allows for offices, retail sales and government offices. But on the whole, it's, it's a pretty straightforward shift. It's still within our commercial designation. Just a slight shift in uses. And I will say, at the writing of the staff report, we had received no comments. We did receive one phone call today, just asking some general questions about the nature of the property and why it was being rezoned. But staff is recommending approval based on the support from the future land use map and general plan. And I believe the applicant is available via phone call for any questions.
All right, discussion, questions.
This is a hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Question, what is the proposed land use? I'm not sure. It's for healthcare?
My, so the proposed, the applicant is representing, I believe it's an HR consulting firm, Honeysis LLC. And they're the ones requesting the zoning change.
Oh, so it's an office use?
Yes.
Okay. And the previous rezone, top of page two, was referring to a previous rezone?
Yes, yes.
Okay, an adult daycare. All right. And so just off, just general office use. So it will not be, it's not a home occupation because they won't live there. Okay. Well, that's about as quiet as you can get. A house with an office, nobody there overnight. Okay.
Do we want to hear from the applicant at all or?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Okay. If you are here.
The applicant's right there on the phone.
Okay.
Do I just speak into this?
Yeah, if you would just state your name and tell us about the application.
Yeah, my name is Aaron Gomez. We have had this property for over a year. And we've had, we've had a couple tenants wanting to move in, but they require a certain zoning. That's the issue. Such as law firms, daycare center, something like that, you know?
So like a law firm is saying that they, they would require, they want to have a general commercial zone?
Yeah.
Rather than just the professional?
Yeah, it would also like enable like, like tax, tax services.
Uh huh.
That type of office, you know, stuff like that.
Interesting. I have a question. What is the property to the north? Is that the detention basin area?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. I just couldn't, you know.
By Davis High in the DATC.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay.
Otherwise known as Lake Fiesta.
Yes, yes, Lake Fiesta.
One of the main differences between the two zones is the general commercial does allow for retail sales and services.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, you know, as, as Ann said, it is kind of a minor difference, but one that could create a challenge with the professional business zone.
I agree. Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
All right, we'll let you sit down. This is a public hearing for this item. So we'll open up the public hearing portion of this meeting. If there's anyone from the public who's here to speak on this issue, this is your opportunity to come forward and.
Thou Starkey, I live in the neighborhood. My, my family's more sensitized this month than last. Our daughter had an accident on 550 and Main, okay? This isn't 550 and Main, but it is similar in a couple situations. My concern is the retail office attorneys that seems to be, have been used. But if you deal with commercial, you're going to probably get more traffic in, okay? So you've got traffic coming out of a driveway onto a 40 mile an hour street, okay? So that to me is a big red flag and it says, ah, but then you've got Laurelwood, which is about 180 feet to the south. So before I went, hope that the planning commission or staff or whomever, somebody would go get the accident reports on Laurelwood and Main to see what the impact could be because of extra cars coming out of the driveway onto a 40 mile an hour street. That's my primary issues. In the residential area, I don't personally like the expansion of commercial. We don't have commercial in the neighborhood. We've got a few offices. That's not a big deal. But you start bringing in commercial and it's the camel in the tent problem to me. As soon as that becomes commercial, the neighbor's going to say, I want mine to be commercial and then you've got proliferation, okay? So neighborhood, I just think that adding commercial down in that area is not a good choice. And I do think that accident potential is something worthy to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for the public comment? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Steph, you're saying there were no other public comments that you received by email or really anything? Okay.
Okay, we'll allow that.
The other accident that happened maybe three weeks ago where someone was coming down northbound and lost control of their car and ran into our neighbor's house. Maybe you've heard about that. Didn't because you don't live there. But it's not, as, as, that's just, that, that, our accident was small compared to some of the other challenges as far as it's just a, it's very fast. It's 45. There is a stop sign. There is a stoplight on 550, which is fine, except when they run the red light, which was what happened to our daughter with, with three little ones under seven. So that's, it's just, it's just a challenge. Also, we just have neighbors that are okay with the business, but maybe not okay with the commercial. And that's how we felt about, that's why we had a room full when we were talking about rezoning the, the community gardens, not because we don't like neighbors and not because we don't like having new things. It's just that when you look at the conditional use permits and you look at the other things that are possible, you don't know who's going to sell the property. You don't know what's going to, who's going to be the next owner. And you just simply don't know, could this be a gas station? Could this be, I mean, they, these people want, they want a lawyer. We can, we can live with a lawyer. We can live with the healthcare people. It's just that when you open up the door to what else it could be, that's, that's where the questions start to come. And it seems a little less comfortable. So thank you for hearing us.
Thank you. Let's see, discussion, conversation. If we want, we can bring back the applicant and answer any questions.
I have a question. Oh. Yeah, so, go, go ahead. We'll come to you if you have a question. Oh, I was just going to ask now that you're here. So it's a professional office. Do we know what kind, is it, are you going to have multiple tenants? I mean, how many?
Yeah, we got, I believe, five rooms. We would use them as like tenants. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with like Regis, certain offices like that. You know, I mean, that would be a pretty good idea for, to use that office space for. Also, I mean, I believe that it was already in your guys' plans too. And the point is to develop the city, right? To grow it. So I believe it definitely helps out a lot.
Well, I, I actually have a couple of concerns about this one. Number one, that's a pretty small lot.
Yeah.
Point 18 is, is under, well under a quarter of an acre. And I don't have anything in the staff report that tells me how much pavement we have, but do we have ample parking just for those who are going to be working in the building?
Yeah, we have parking in the back. We have a pretty good part, amount of parking space.
They do, Paul, if you go take a look, they.
Oh, did I miss it?
Around it.
It's not here, but.
Oh, on the aerial. Okay, so they've got, so your, your tenants can park in the back? And the people who come to the building?
There's two parking spots up front. If they need to, they could go back.
And you've got additional space in the back?
Yeah.
Usually I'm pretty liberal on parking, but if you're going to have that many different professionals, and I don't know how many of them would have somebody come to the office during the day, but that would be a concern that I have. But generally, office use like this does not gener, oh, there we go. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. General office use does not actually generate a ton of, of traffic. Retail would, retail would. So I, I see good circulation movement there. So this seems pretty ideal for the use that has been proposed now that that's been clarified. And then I did have one.
Commissioner, if, if I may, the other applicant who's on the line wanted to add to his comments.
Okay.
Okay, are you ready?
Yes, sure. Thank you for all the questions. I would like to add that we, we have professional tenants as professional office space or you know, lawyer offices or consultant's office with very or limited number of clients that they will come in. And we have ample parking space inside the building, in front of the building, right next to the building and also in the back of the building. We have, you know, closed parking also. So there won't be any issue with clients coming in and parking on the road or anything like that. So I don't think that will be a problem at all. But we will, we will limit or try to limit them to professional office spaces instead of anything busy retail. For example, the current, I mean, the previous tenant, he was a professional business coach. And these, these kind of offices, they would have two or three appointments a day. So they would come, take classes and leave.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I mean, you'll have to self-monitor because there's not going to be any on-street parking here, correct?
No.
That's bike lane.
It's like this big over there.
Yeah. And, and I think we have bike lane there, so you can't park in the bike lane. Is that, is that a regulated bike lane?
It's not a bike lane.
Oh, it's not?
Well, also this is a UDOT right of way.
I see a decal there. Or is that a manhole cover? Right there, yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's a manhole. There also is though this pull-through driveway, right? So we wouldn't have
backing out.
Backing out onto Main Street.
Yeah, which is really good, yeah.
And we, I mean, we do, we do have vehicles that park on Main Street.
Okay. Well, that, that, okay.
I would like to add, I mean, my experience working with these people, we would be a little bit strict on the tenants with the parking spaces as well to make sure there's enough room.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, it is an interesting situation. It's, you know, it's already an office type of use, so that you already have vehicles coming and going. Our general plan shows it as commercial. So I mean, the request really fits with what the plan says. Just from personal experience, I'm, my parents, before they passed away, they lived on Redwood Road in South Jordan. And Redwood Road was, you know, it's high speed, high, a lot of traffic. And the number of the homes, older homes that were along there had been commercializing. And in fact, right across the street from them, they had a house that had been converted into a chocolate shop, which made me love to go over there and visit them. But, you know, so they had, they had commercial traffic going in and out of there. Coming out onto Redwood Road, which was 50 miles an hour, you know, and I mean, yeah, you're going to have a situation anytime you've got traffic. You've got that with, you know, with a residence, residence. you've got that with, you know, with the residents, residents is coming in and out on a road like that. More traffic, obviously, in a commercial. But busy roads are intended to handle that, and.
Yeah.
And it, it makes it a challenge, though, a little bit, to come in and out. I don't know, you know, it's, I don't see what they're asking for is out of line because of what our plan says.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I agree with you, Wilf, and my, my experience is that almost every town and city in the last 20, 30 years, as society has changed, struggles with whether or not to allow conversions of homes to businesses on their main drag. My little hometown in Idaho, you know, I went up there over the weekend for a class reunion, and I, I, the continuation of the homes on the Main Street in that town has continued, and they've done a pretty good job. And, and every city has to make a choice. Are we gonna allow, you know, businesses maybe off the main drag? Are we gonna allow them to shotgun out through the community here and there? Are we gonna concentrate them just in hardcore commercial areas? What do you do when you have 30,000 cars a day? For example, Highland Drive, you've got people living on Highland Drive that are in their 70s and 80s or older, and they no longer want to live there, and it's harder for them to get in and out of their house, and yet it's a perfect place for a law office, you know? And, and the, the difficulty in trying to decide to hang on to residential, where maybe it doesn't work anymore because speeds are faster and traffic is more than it used to be, or not, is, it's a big question. So, I, I think this is ideal, but, and we've had a lot of stuff, you know, north of this, we've got some really good properties facing Main Street that look great, and I think it contributes to the community. So, I'm not too afraid of commercial creep because I think the zone can be applied on a case-by-case basis, depending on the geometry and the way that it's laid out. So, I think this is a good application. I'm with you, especially because the way that it's already kind of set up, I just, and there won't be any traffic in the evenings or overnight, whereas with residential, you actually would. So, you know, there could be theoretically on this property, a family, a large family, that would generate in one day more traffic than you could have from a small office like this. That's been shown over and over again.
Do we have a motion?
Well, in order to move things along and see if anybody else on the commission has any comments, I would make a motion that we recommend to the council an approval of the rezone request from PB Professional Business to GC General Commercial at 579 South Main Street, in part because it complies with our general plan.
I'll second.
All right, we'll start the voting with myself. I'll vote aye.
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 All right, that recommendation will go to the City Council.
Six of us.
Next item of business, a continuation of the consideration for a rezone application for Brian Carling, 1735 South 550 West, continuing from July 11th. So, let's, bring us up to speed on this.
Thank you. So, I'm, I'm gonna put my Jerry Maguire hat on here for a minute, and I'm gonna help you help me. And, you know, let me start by saying this, that I'm here because I believe in good government. I wouldn't be in government if I didn't feel that way about it. We had some, I think, fairly harsh comments and criticism that came out of, not only this rezone, but others that have come through, and this is common, not just to Kaysville, other places that I've worked. But I just wanna take a moment to go through ways that our residents can be informed and kind of take initiative on their own to understand what's going on in their neighborhood, in their community. And one of the reasons why specifically I wanted to go through this on this item, not only because of the presence that we had at our last meeting, but because of upcoming development that will happen in the area, and I don't know if it'll be next year or two years from now, but I did go over this slide at the last meeting. All of that property in yellow is owned by Ivory Homes. There was a question a resident had as to whether or not the Andersons still owned that, but the county records back in July did indicate that Ivory Homes owns those parcels. The ones in red are owned by Symphony Homes. So, here's how, how you can help us to keep you informed. So, please go to our website and sign up for public notices on planning commission agendas, city council agendas. It's pretty fairly, or it's a very, fairly easy process. You go to our homepage, you scroll to the bottom, you click on agendas, minutes, and videos. That'll take you to this page. Over on the right-hand side, click on subscriptions. That'll take you to a page where you would create an account, and then you would go through the process of subscribing to whatever meeting body you would like to have. So, any rezone ordinance change by law has to come through Planning Commission, and then they give a recommendation, goes to City Council. So, you can help be informed by signing up for Planning Commission meeting agendas, City Council meeting agendas. What will happen at that point in time, when we go into our agenda software and publish our agenda or our packet, you will receive an email that looks like this and has a link on it where you can just click, and the agenda will come up. So, you know, we do our best to notify as many people as, as what the laws require. We can't notify everyone, it's just not practical for us, and so I'm encouraging our residents to do their part. There's also the Parks and Recreation Board that meets, and, and all of those agendas, you can subscribe. Those will come right to your phone, if you have your email on your phone, pretty simple. Another way to stay involved, we post, or informed, we post all of our agendas on our Facebook page. So, we have, we copied and pasted our Planning Commission agenda for this evening. City Council is also shared on there. And then last, we, state law requires that we post public hearings and agendas on their website, which is u.gov/pmn. And if you wanna go through a very complicated, convoluted process to sign up for public notices through the state, feel free to do that. You would go to, or just Google Utah Public Meeting Notice. You go to the site, you would scroll to the bottom, there's three columns where you would click, the type of body you're looking for. You would select municipality. A second column would have you select Kaysville City, and then a third column would have you, would have you select whether it's City Council, Planning Commission, et cetera. And then you would click on that, it takes you to another screen, you scroll to the bottom, and there's a way for you to subscribe there. So, there's lots of opportunities for residents to stay informed, I encourage you to do that. It's very easy to ignore an email or not pay attention. We can't possibly mail a notice to every residence, and at some point, we do have to draw a line as to where we send out notices. So, this can help bridge that gap and help residents stay informed and, and have that transparency that, that's important to me. So, that said, we'll get into the, the application that was continued from the July 11th meeting. And we did have a very kind resident that pointed out, I had a typo on our agenda in my staff report, I listed it as A, or as R14. This is just R4, there's no such thing as an R14. In my defense, I was, I was back in the country for two days when I was writing the staff report, and I didn't actually know what day or time it was, so forgive me for that. Also, this has been a situation that's been very unique, one that I've never been in before, where there was a, a pretty, I'm just gonna say momentous misunderstanding between me and the applicant as to what the intent was for the project. So, the staff report that was written for the meeting on July 11th was written from the standpoint of single-family detached dwellings. It was then discussed in the meeting that Mr. Carling's desire was to have townhomes. So, this staff report then has been rewritten based on the applicant's intent, and so it is going to be a very different recommendation than what we had before. But just to go over several things quickly, I don't wanna spend a lot of time because some of these basics were covered in the last meeting. This property is located at approximately 730, 1735 South 200 West. It's 2.8 acres, and it is currently zoned A1, light agricultural, and the applicant has requested that it go to R4, which is a multifamily zone. This is a concept plan that he had submitted that shows eight lots that would be created, a public road, and then each of these lots, based on size, would allow a bank of four townhomes, two or three. This is just an aerial view of where the property is located. You can see it's south of Mare Drive and east of Sunset, and it is really located right in the middle of an agricultural area. This is the current zoning map of what's over there in the area, so you can see everything surrounded by that is an agricultural use. And there is, to the north and east, there is some R1 zoning for the, the residential, which is a varied zone that essentially is a half acre per lot. The future land use map shows the property using that red arrow is meant to be single-family So, I wanna go through what the, the general plan states, and, and there is, in my experience, you rarely have a general plan that fully supports something and doesn't have any information that is contradictory to one side. And so, one of the comments that recently came in was that they felt like my staff report from July was, was very contradictory. And yes, it was, because there is contradictory evidence in the general plan. What you do in the end is try and weigh what's heavier, what outweighs. And with the single-family, I felt like, and with the modern com housing requirements, I felt like that weighed heavier towards approval for the, the R4. But in this instance, knowing that it is not intended to be single-family, had a different lens on. So, there's various elements to the general plan. We have guiding principles, we have goals and objectives, and again, there are goals and objectives that support and do not support or oppose this application. So, our land use and placemaking plan is in Chapter 1. It states that we should preserve and protect Kaysville's small-town atmosphere, limiting change and function in, or limiting change and functioning neighborhoods and districts. I did go over this on July 11th, and this is one portion of the general plan that would not support a change to R4 multifamily. Same with Goal 5, although you do, as staff, we look not just at the wording in the goal, but you, you look a little bit deeper and look at what does the objective say in the implementation measures, and does this particularly fit? This preserve and enhance remaining pastoral areas is really speaking more towards having different types of development that we don't really have on our books right now, but looking at conservation, subdivisions, and easements. This kind of doesn't really fit that, but overall, the goal does support having the rezone denied. So, here's a couple other things, or three things that then would support the application to R4. We have this goal, or this overarching guiding principle, says we wanna provide diverse housing options in our community. Again, Chapter 1, Goal 8, says that we should provide a range of housing options, and I believe 92% of the residential housing in Kaysville is single-family. That's not very diverse. So, you know, that is an element where the general plan would say, hey, yeah, this, this, this would be supported. I went over at the beginning of the meeting, our modern com housing plan, and this goal and objective would also support this. However, if you can look at number C, the difference between July 11th and my recommendation this evening is that if we, if we would've done the rezone in single-family homes with the development agreement, it would've met the future land use plan to be single-family. In this instance, because Mr. Carling wants to have the townhomes, it does not meet the general plan, or the future land use map. And so, we, we've committed to the state that we would give applications like this strong consideration of approval, but don't have to provide a recommendation of approval. If this was property that was fronting the new connector road that we've built, it may have a different recommendation, but where this is really in the middle of that agricultural area, it just really doesn't fit what exists. And again, that future land use map says that the, the property in the future should be developed as single-family. So, just, I'll go through these real quickly. Again, differences between A1 and R4 is much more dense, minimum lot size. Height for buildings are the same, front setbacks are five feet less in R4, the side setback is reduced by two feet, the rear setback is half of what it is, so it's 15 feet, and the frontage is reduced from 100 feet to 70. And, and for anyone who may not understand what the frontage term is, is that's how much property you have running across the, the street. So, that would be the distance of your, or the, the width of your front yard, essentially. R4 allows one or two family dwellings on a lot that's 8,000 square feet, three family dwellings on 10,000, and four family on a lot that has to be at least 12,000 square feet. There's also 600 square feet of open space that is required to be provided per each residential unit, and 20 feet of outdoor storage that has to be provided. We have received a lot of public comment about this. We've received, we received quite a few emails before the meeting in July. We had several of those that were in support, and the majority of those were opposed to the rezone. We have received several more emails in between that meeting and today. Also, for the sake of the public, when you submit that contact form on Planning Commission, it automatically gets distributed to each of our Planning Commission members that are here tonight and our ultimate members. It goes to me, Mindy, Ann, and, and so those are read and, and are an immediate send to each of our Planning Commission members. We also received quite a bit of public comment at that July 11th meeting, and opposition, again, based on those items listed. So, again, a big difference between July 11th and, and this evening, but based on the fact that this does not conform to the future land use map. And while there is some evidence in the general plan to support this, overall, staff feels like this should receive a recommendation of denial. At the last meeting, Planning Commission did direct staff to sit down and work with Mr. Carling and come up with something that may have been more palatable to. Mr. Carling and come up with something that may have been more palatable to the public as well as the commission. And the applicant, in the end, after some discussions, has just chosen, he wants to stick with that R4 zone, and so, based on that, and the fact that they would be attached multifamily products over there, it just does not fit, and that's essentially the reason for the recommendation of denial.
Mr. Carling, would you like to make any comments, given the change? Let you come up and...
So, for the record, I'm Brian Carling, the applicant. There's a lot of things that I could discuss and point out. When we look at most of the opposition, I would say 10% of it is the valid lack of desire for density. Most of it is changing. They want to change, they don't want change to anything different. They would like it to remain in alfalfa fields, but the other people, they don't own it. I did mention to city staff that especially on the east side, that I'm absolutely committed to my word of being flexible to those impacted three homes. Some people are very frustrated. They were frustrated that they didn't get a notification, because usually, that's like a 500-foot radius. Well, that's, that shows how rural that it is, is that many people weren't notified because there's only three homes to the east, and each one of them are exactly, on average, 252.5 feet away, that their homes to any future structure that would be there. Another item would be, my application was for an R4. I've never misrepresented what an R4 rezone would allow. It's always been R4. It is what it is. I never implied that these would be single-family. If I wanted single-family, we would go with an R6, or an R18, or an R110. But the desire is to be able to get homes to share the lot line and the structural wall. Here's a little bit of economic background. Might not be a lesson for you, but here's kind of a general rule. Over the decades, the rule of thumb has been a third the cost of the land, a third the cost of the infrastructure, a third potentially for the really rich developer. That percentage of profit has gone down. My good faith estimate is about $1 million to put in the road that would be like an L shape, that would go towards the east and then towards my neighbors, the Purines. They have agreed that this sounds like the best for them, which would create one eventual horseshoe there on the shape. But for $1 million on that city-approved 55-foot wide, giving the city eight feet that they would require on the 550, the city wants that to be 66 feet wide. This is along the lines of Crestwood. This is the same width as, I believe, Old Mill, Flint Street in many parts, parts of Fairfield. 66 feet wide, that's wide. So, if we talk about the general plan, and you know, where are these higher densities supposed to go? The city was granted $14 million to extend from the roundabout of Shepherd Lane to go west. It wasn't a road to nowhere. It was city, it was state-granted money to help for future development. Further south of this area, there is commercial earmarked down by the old Mink Creek, or Mink Farm, the on-ramp that goes on the new Legacy Highway. So, that commercial is probably going to develop north. There's nothing else out there. So, if everyone wants to keep it, you know, this rural field, how are we ever going to change? How are we ever going to think differently? When the general plan, and I've been involved with Kaysville City's general plan many years ago, that general plan should be developed. It is outdated for the single reason of what it costs to borrow money. Nobody that is, less than 5% of the graduates from Davis High School can afford to live in Kaysville with the average home, probably in the mid-600 ranges. So, on the economic lesson here, 1 million for the road there, that doesn't include what I will have to ante up to Ivory or Symphony Homes does, which would be the pioneering agreement. They're not going to let anybody else tap into it. That's, in my estimation, probably another $300,000. Well, the city council met, they discussed projects that are in the works, and immediately, they fire off and say, "I want to see 10,000-square-foot lots there. That means I'll get eight lots on there." Immediately, that will throw the front frontage 30 feet. This width is exactly 215 feet, 215.5 feet north to south. That leaves about 80 feet north and south on each of those. That leaves 15-foot rear setbacks, which is according to the city code. That leaves 25-foot front setbacks, according to the city code and need. This is standard. This would leave curb and gutter, the park strip, the width of the normal street, a dedicated city street. This would be done correctly. Homes would just, I'm sorry that they're called twin homes. That's like a nasty word in Kaysville. We could call it something like a, you know, a country cottage, even though they share a wall, but the goal is to not spread the one point. Basically, a 10,000-square-foot lot will cost over $400,000. That is, that is real. That is what it will cost if it's a 10,000-square-foot lot. If it doesn't go 10,000-square-foot lots, or if we go to R18, many developers would still throw in the private street development. They're going to do an overlay, and they're going to have these itty-bitty, you know, narrow streets, and they can probably still accomplish, and the city has approved those time and time again. What the city has is they have one multifamily zoned on the west side of I-15, one. It's off of Flint Street. There are, I believe, two R2s. There is not a single R4 zoning west of I-15. There's not one. That's not diverse. There's not a single multifamily of any kind of the RM zoning south of 100 South. When you look at the map of what the city's general plan shows and where the future development is, the biggest green spot is here and south through the sewer district down to the south exit. Where else is the growth going to come? It can't stay in alfalfa forever. My taxes on this are $4,000-something-odd dollars a year, plus my water bill, which is upwards of 900, and the electrical bill. So, I'm looking at about a $460 a month tax bill, and I don't even water my alfalfa because I choose to grow alfalfa just with what the groundwater is there, even though I have the water shares. So, I'm paying this high fee. Everyone else would like to say, "Oh, no, you can't have anything else except for what's in my backyard." Kaysville is prejudiced against anybody that's different than a 1/3 acre, $700,000 home. That is a serious prejudice, and we should look at ourselves in the face and realize all of our comments are not allowing our own children to live here. If I can spread the cost of this 1-point-something-odd-high-dollar, almost $2 million, if I try to spread it over eight 10,000-square-foot lots, like the city council is already thinking in their mind, that does not serve what the state is trying everybody to come together and do, think differently about this. All I'm asking for is a rezone. Kaysville City does not allow any home to be built greater than 30-foot high that only allows for two stories. These would be homes where young families that would have wonderful children that will fill our elementary schools, it might be a single family, or a single mother, it might be, it might be anything of that nature. If and when these do get built, they will go to their churches, their schools, their events, and they won't think anything differently about it. There's this fear of having something different in Kaysville. Kaysville is the standout city in all of Davis County that says no to everything. And all these people behind me, they want to say no, and it's a prejudice that we all have. All I ask is fair consideration on the east side. I will put my honesty and my commitment to you that on those three homes that are there and those owners, yes, I'm willing to compromise on those. You can put that in the record, Mindy. But on the other, I don't see why we couldn't have homes that share a lot. They would still be two-car garages. They would still be three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bathroom. They would still be 15 to 17 to 1800 square feet. These are still not, not that cheap a homes, but my goal is to get it at about a $375,000 price tag. I don't know if that's for sure going to happen. It for sure will not happen with 10,000-square-foot lots. So, I ask for an up or down vote. I will take all of my legal recourse. I've talked to the governor's office. They're aware. I ask you to consider something for the people that don't come to these meetings. They have no idea we're considering this. They'll never believe that they can live in Kaysville. The mayor called me when she first found out this on the public notification, and she said, "My son told me about it." He had some kind of notification. This is the mayor, and she's probably now one of the ones that want to vote for 10,000 because she's probably influenced by other people that are hardcore against change for Kaysville. Her son was hopeful that he might be able to find something that was affordable in Kaysville. Not going to happen unless something changes. For the record, I have written a letter. I would like to have staff summarize this. I don't want to bore you with it, I've spoken too much. I just ask that you consider something different that will allow more people to live in Kaysville and try to reach this affordable, more affordable, moderate-income homes for Kaysville. There's three neighbors. They're 250 feet away. Thank you for your time. I'm passionate about it, but I've had so many insults just because I want to change the alfalfa field and the horse barn into something different. People accuse me of, "Oh, I'm selfish, I'm a rich developer." No, I'm not. I live down the street from you guys. I just want to see something that's better than the snobbish bias that all of Kaysville collectively has. I'll leave this for staff. And I would love to answer any questions that you might have about this being the maximum density that just a simple R4, the maximum that it would allow. I've run the numbers, I've figured out the space. That is the worst-case scenario, and that will change because on the east side, I've committed to the neighbors with concern on the east.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Carling. So, we talked at the last meeting when you were here about maybe looking, sorry.
Thanks. We talked at the last meeting about you looking at some different options, and it sounds like you did, you discussed some of those with Melinda. Small lots, single-family homes on much smaller lots as a possibility, and it sounds like from what Melinda's saying is that you're not willing to consider doing that, that you...
I'm mad at the city.
Okay.
I want an up or down vote, and I'm going to go to the state.
So, you wouldn't want, you wouldn't accept anything other than an R4 zoning?
Yes, I would.
What would you accept?
If we go to R16, that does not allow for what's called the twin home conversion because it gets the lot size down to 3,000. You can't do that, and it doesn't allow it in the code. If we went for R18, if I'm honest, yes. If I have to go that route, I would be tickled to get R18. The reason why is the conditional use permit would allow that to be a twin home.
Right, and we talked about that a little bit at the last meeting.
And I'm sure another public hearing is going to get everybody crawling out of their shorts and be so bothered by that, but I think if it went R18, they wouldn't be able to stop it. You'd have to give a, how could you not allow me to do that and you still allow the one with the garden plot across from the high school? I don't see how you could treat me any differently.
Well, and that's part of what we discussed at the last meeting. So, that's, that's what I was curious about because from what Melinda was just saying and from what the staff report said, it sounded, to me, it sounded like what you were saying, "I only want the R4 zoning. I wouldn't consider anything else."
Tonight, I want an up or down vote.
On the R4?
Yep.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Question. A good question, Will. Thank you. For staff and the applicant, are we, we're consistent in using development agreements to get to where we want to be?
Yeah.
If that's the case, then I have a question for the applicant. If you could get to a density that pencils to get things that are affordable, because I think that is, in my mind, the most important question here, is I don't see any reason to rezone this for the sake of rezoning if we're not achieving what the general plan wants, which is actually to create some affordability.
Well, but in fairness, it's to maintain that feel. There's got to be a balance, because the people are mostly here because they don't want to change. They don't want to see these high densities. They think it will decrease their home value.
Oh, I, oh, no.
That is a fairy tale, never been proved.
No, I've heard this a couple of thousand times, and I'm being honest there. No, I totally get that. But with, if the city were to use a development agreement with a density that is not as dense as what you're talking about, and the development agreement built in a price point of somewhat flexible price point, but not too flexible, not too high, and we could get at or very near 80% AMI, and I think the price point you're talking about is probably pretty close to that. I don't know exactly what, 80% of AMI and then 30 to 33% of that toward mortgage payment, but if we could get mortgage payments that are actually in the affordable, according to 80% AMI, which is what the Modern Income Plan is all about, then I would, I as a planning commissioner and as someone that doesn't live too far from there, would be very favorable toward getting something to where we could have young families able to move into the city in quality development. I'd be in favor of that, but only with the assurance that what we don't get is a bait and switch, which is what neighbors always complain about. Okay, you got the rezone, oh, but then what came was, oh, we went from you saying in a public hearing, "Yeah, these are going to be affordable," and they end up being almost as expensive as single-family detached.
That's a very likely outcome. There's no guarantee that interest rates will go up or down. I have no crystal ball, none of us do.
But in a development agreement, you can build in provisions that address a lot of those things, and so, so what I...
Mr. Allred, staff was very diligent at communicating ideas of that development agreement, but right off the bat, the comments from the higher authorities are saying, "Nope, we want to see 10,000-square-foot lots. End of story."
Okay.
It's a non-starter.
Okay, okay, understood. Then my questions are probably useless at this point.
I don't think that they're useless because I'm not unreasonable. Will, if we could get, if we could get the R18 with the, I'm not stupid, I mean, but sometimes, and when you're in here and you have to negotiate, you've got to shoot for something, but now I'm angry, and I want the city to go on record to say no, and I want you to say yes or no.
Well, actually, the number I had was, the very first home I lived in was a darling home, single-family detached. It was a 6,500-square-foot lot. All of the lots around me were that way, and there were, every here and there were some big twins, some duplexes, and they were very nice, but they shared a lot line. And that was a great neighborhood, and I can promise you this, the average person driving down the street cannot visually tell you the difference between an 8,000-square-foot lot and a 10, or a 6,500-square-foot lot and an 8. An R16 zone was the zone that I was thinking, or somewhere between 6 and 8, might make it possible for you, we could really, I think, craft something that works. We get a mix of single-family detached, or we just get all townhomes, but you get a density that still works to make it so it's affordable, but we break through that barrier where all of West Kaysville is just kind of these mini farms. I've lived in West Kaysville for 27 years on a large lot. If there had been smaller lots offered, I would have bought one. There is a need for this kind of housing. I have, not to get too personal, but I have two children who got into beautiful townhomes three years ago, right before rates went up, and they're gorgeous twin homes. They love living in them. It is, and they are in their, one is 30 and one is 34, and they're building equity, and it's a great little neighborhood.
They don't want yards to be cared of.
They don't. My kids want to, they want what's called, they want in... They don't. My kids want to try, they want what's called, they want, and, uh, they don't want to be tied down to the yard that their parents provided for.
They want to put turf in the front and the backyard because they don't want to water it. They don't want to mow it.
Yep. Yep. They have a little stoop for barbecues because everywhere they live, every, there are so many amenities within walking distance. They don't need them in their yard. So much of the demographic of today, young people today, the 25 to 44, they don't want the traditional picket fence and single-family home. Now, most of us are in the age demographic where we did want that. That's how we were raised. But I think there is a way to bridge what the general plan and is, what the general plan says, which I think is a misnomer, and what the state and what is desperately needed, which is to provide housing for these young people, the sons of the mayor and others. So I've just, I, I'd like to feel hopeful that there's something we could do because we have to, we have to change. There has to be some change. You're correct on a lot of what you've said.
I'd like to comment if it's all right. I, I would love to see more of these opportunities also in West Kaysville. I'm not opposed to the way it is drawn up. I feel like when I think of the townhomes that are on Main Street, north end of Kaysville, I think they're beautiful, elegant.
They're higher than 30 feet, by the way.
They're tall, but they're attractive homes. Now, if, based on these rectangles, I'm not the designer or architect. I can't ensure that they are, you know, a beautiful, you know, development, but it has potential to be. And I'm sitting on a teeny little lot, 6,000 square foot lot in West Kaysville. And, and my home is turning to be quite unaffordable, even for myself, if I had to buy it again. So I'm thinking, even with the density, which is, which is in the right direction. I love the little, single-family, you know, small lots better than, you know, all the half-acre lots that we're seeing. But, I mean, I would, I would like to at least give city council the opportunity to review it.
I know what the answer is already, but I would like to see the review.
That's out of my hands, but I think it, I would like to, I think there are enough reasons for... And I, and I acknowledge the, you know, concerns against, but I think there's enough reasons that city council ought to see it.
So regardless of what the planning commission recommends tonight, it'll go to city council. If it was recommendation of denial, it'll go. If it's recommendation of approval, it'll go. If it's recommendation of approval of R1.8, it'll go to city council, and they will decide. The only way it wouldn't is if the applicant chose to withdraw his application.
Thank you.
This is a hard one, and you made a lot of persuasive arguments. I just, my, my instinct is that the density should be tapered. And I think if the state ties our hands so much that we can't say that, then I don't know what the point of having a planning commission is, but it, I don't know. That's my comment. It's hard. But I, my instinct is that the density should be tapered.
Can you say again? It should be what?
Tapered, like...
Reduced.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we have all the large lots, and then my understanding was from the last meeting, though, there's potential development in the area that we could get the density further away from that zone.
Okay, tapered. All right, that's the word. All right.
There's not a ton of different zonings. There's the RM, which I knew would inflame everybody, that allows six, six per structure. That's all it allows, is six per structure. The front, back, the sides are actually even wider. The height is all the same. Just that how many walls can you share? R2 and R1.8 with the twin conversion are identical.
Yep, yep, they are.
And if it's a conditional use, then it's probably gonna happen either way. If we, you know, even if we did a higher-density zoning.
I'm not unreasonable, but I, I want to hold the city's feet to the fire on an answer.
On the RM, on the R4?
On the R.
On the R4, I want to hold your feet to the fire to have an answer.
See, I'm, I mean, I'm really open to, and, and we talked about this at the last meeting with the R1.8, how you could, you know, do a lot with the R1.8. And frankly, and I mean, Paul and many of you will know this, you can build twin homes or duplexes and triplexes, and they look just like single-family homes. It's really hard to tell that they're not single-family homes.
You have very few of those in Kaysville.
I know. I agree.
You can count them on two hands.
You got a big one right on Sunset. Gorgeous one. Big twin. It's not far from your place.
Good point. So looking at that, and then, you know, with smaller lots, our general plan says single-family homes for this area. Or, I mean, that's essentially what it says, right, Melinda, is single-family homes. That's what our plan shows.
The future land use map.
For the future.
Which is a critical element of the general plan.
Yeah. I think we could do that, but have the option of doing the, the smaller lots, making them look like single-family homes so that the effect is identical to that. I would be in favor of, of recommending something like that. You know, I, it's possible that you could do something with the R4 and given the configuration that you have here, but until, unless we had a development agreement that really spelled out what that would be, you know, I, I'm not willing to go there or to recommend that to the council. I would be willing to recommend the R1.8.
Remember all those things you said on that YouTube video that's out there?
Yeah, yeah. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Well, I'll give you guys some of my thoughts. This is not necessarily a question or anything for you. Just, you know, as we're asked to look at all the different factors that, that we already mentioned, they often have conflicts where, you know, the general plan can say multiple things and you can't get all of them. This land can and eventually will be developed, and, and if it did not change zoning at all, you would have these large lots, as we can already see throughout a significant amount of West Kaysville. We, we, I can't distinguish very much between those lots and smaller lots. They, I mean, they look the same as far as they have a house and they have grass. The argument that, that, you know, it preserves an agricultural feel, a very small percentage of the, of the properties have any portion of the property being used in an agricultural manner. And so then I have to ask the question, is this what Kaysville needs, half-acre lots or smaller opportunities, smaller lots? And I think we've made the case that there's, there's a lot of need for that, that it's a priority. It's in the general plan, and it's a priority to have some variety, diversity in, in the plan. We've already mentioned that there's very little density west and south of, you know, the freeway and about 200 north. This location, now, now there's a lot of things I think that would need to fall into place. You know, the 550 would have to be improved. It would have to be connected into the, the main roads down there. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things. Were that to happen, I mean, this, this would be very close to two freeway entrances. Once the New Shepard, I mean, it would just be main roads straight to the, the new interchange on I-15 and, and of course, on the West Davis corridor. That is, that's a positive in my mind. And, and these are my thoughts. I'm not trying to, you know, argue a, a certain position and convince people, but when I look at the, you know, does it fit the area? In density, no. It, it, it's different. Now, different has to contact each, I mean, we, we have zones that touch each other all the time that are, have different uses. But in most other things, it's very similar. Buildings that would be built in this density would not be taller than houses that are allowed right now. Wouldn't have very different setbacks. They're not gonna block anyone's view really any differently than a house that we could go out and build today. They're not gonna have different types of noise or light or anything else. They, they really could fit fine. The, the one main difference is the density. And I think when they say make sure that it, it fits within the neighborhood, we're, we're really looking at things that are much different, that would have significant challenges. That's at least my viewpoint on it, that you're not bringing in, you know, industrial stuff next to a, a school or, or that kind of like extreme differences. I don't see the difference here. And given the, the, the pressure to, that I think is coming from ourselves, not, I'm not talking about necessarily what's coming from the, the state, but the goals of having diversity, the goals of having diversity in multiple parts of the city and not, you know, that, that... I feel like this could be a very acceptable development in this part of the area. It's not a slam dunk. It's, I'm, but that's where I fall is like, you know, it's kind of near the middle, but I lean in that direction where I feel like it's, it's something that would, that would work. That's, those are just my thoughts.
Melinda, do we know, have you had any conversation at all with Ivory or with Symphony about what they're thinking?
I've not had any conversations with Ivory Homes. I've had several with Symphony, probably six. I, I did state this at the last July 11th meeting, the 30 acres that they own down there, the last concept plan that they came to, which would require a development agreement. And again, we would mail out notices, please subscribe to get the agendas so that people further away than 500 feet would get a notice. But their concept included, I believe, 220 units. There was a mix of some townhomes close to that Angel Street Connector Road, some R1.6, R1.8. And as you got closer towards the existing homes, it feathered the density much lower to match Third Acre. I think Third Acre was the most, or the lowest density that they had. So, you know, and I, and I think it was a, a good plan. Now, of course, there's a lot that needs to be, happen between now and then. I anticipated that they would submit a rezon application this year. It's now August. I don't know if, if they will or not, but the conversations we've had with them is looking at developing with diverse housing, with different kinds of options. And, you know, I, I'll, I'll just say this too, and I've never been to a National League of Cities conference, but the previous community I worked for in Murray City, their council members went to those meetings and came back and said everything they learned and classes that they took is that neighborhoods with diverse housing options and diverse type of families and community members are the best type of neighborhoods. You know, so what Symphony has brought, I feel like, is representative of that diversity, you know, that diverse income, that diverse resident. So, you know, but again, this is, right, the planning commission's a recommending body, and, and staff makes a recommendation as well, but in the end, the city council makes that decision. And where that would fall, I, anyone could say.
Okay.
Based on, I just want to speak up definitively here. Going to page four, I've got five or six little bullet points. First of all, I want to say general plans are not obligatory. We all know that. The city does not have to follow its general plan. I was involved in this general plan. I was disappointed in many aspects of this general plan. And I'll start with bullet point one, where it says, "Small town." We're not a small town. I hate it when general plans use false language, misleading language, to keep the prejudice going, to keep the, "We're gonna keep everybody out" going. That's ridiculous. We need to stop it. We're not a small town. We're over 30,000 people. We're on the West End front. We're in the middle of a, one of the most urban, urban belts in the United States. We're the eighth most urbanized state in the nation. We need to stop using words that are false. That brings me to the next point. Whenever you use the word rural or pastoral atmosphere, that's ridiculous. Most of this city is not pastoral. It is not rural. It's not agricultural. We got a few pockets left. We are suburbia. And we need to act like it and stop pretending it and kicking this opportunity down the road. I'm tired of it. This is a medium-density request, not high-density. It's medium-density. And the density we have west of I-15 is misguided, and it has been for decades. I used to be the city planner in Centerville, and I used to talk to John Thacker when he was the city manager here. Kaysville did not even have an urban planner till about 10, 12 years ago. The city manager just did the planning on top of being the city manager. That was irresponsible. It was ridiculous that this city just said, "We're gonna lock up the entire west side of our city for rich people who want to have large lots." Well, I happened to be one of them, but I was a public servant, and I had just enough money to buy a lot in a neighborhood. I had pointed out when I was in college, I said, "I want to live right there someday." I did that in 1985, when I was in the middle of undergrad. I eventually bought a lot here because my employer said I had to live within a certain distance of my work. Okay, I found a lot, the last lot in the subdivision. I feel lucky to be in West Kaysville. It's also difficult. I have a half acre that is difficult to manage now, and it's ridiculous that that's all we have on the west side. We're wasting our water, and we're preventing opportunities from other people to live around us. And what the applicant has said is absolutely true. We are prejudiced as all get out. And I don't want to hear anybody say differently because I know it's true. We joke about the whole first families of Kaysville. We joke about it, the football games. Yeah, wow. It is true. Yeah, it is. My kids got it. If you weren't raised in Kaysville, you weren't treated the same. Well, my kids weren't raised in Kaysville. Next point, not high-density. And then, and then here's another issue, okay? The development standards that this city has for streets are, are absolutely obscene. The width of our streets encourages danger. The faster the street is because it's wider. The wider and straighter a street, the more dangerous it is. The fact that that road is gonna cost hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars for a little, small road is exactly the problem with development. When you have city standards that require such an expense for infrastructure that is not needed and is not wise, you've now raised the cost of housing. The developer can't, he can't go under by making a subdivision. If the city infrastructure costs are so high, he has to pass that on to the homeowner. That is a huge thing we're not even talking about here. We don't need a 55-foot road. We need a little private road that's about 25 to 30 feet wide. I worked for a city where we didn't do one public street in 16 years. All of the subdivisions were done on private roads of 20 to 26 feet wide. And the neighbors loved it because it was quiet and nobody went fast on those roads. And the city didn't have to pay for one bit of that road. They never have to maintain it. The neighbors have to maintain it. That road is, it's ridiculously wide. It's wrong. It's wrong. There should be a conditional use permit allowed for a PUD for this property and any property on the west side so they can cluster the homes, throw out the setbacks, allow the buildings to be moved within an envelope, cluster the development, and allow any property to have a common ownership. Clustering and moving property around and the buildings around is the best way to develop and reducing these standards. So I'm chastising our development standards because they are artificially raising the cost of homes. We're locking people out of homes because the developer can't make what they need to make. So I, I'm sorry, I'm on my soapbox here, but I don't apologize for knowing what I know and seeing the absolute disastrous effects of not looking carefully at all of the ramifications of the large-lot zoning and the poor standards. Our general plan is misguided in the language that it uses. And if we as planners, we need to remember, we're not the council here. This group we sit on right here, we're planners. We should be doing good planning. And good planning here says we look at these issues and we make a recommendation, regardless of how we think, the public or... of how we think the public or the city council is going to act. So I am in favor of increasing density here. And if he wants an up and down vote, great, we can vote on it. But we need to be aware of these issues permanently and stop using the ridiculous general plan that is, it's misleading. It's double speak. It says, it says we should look for opportunities for housing and then it, and then it kills that opportunity by saying it needs to be pastoral. That is contradictory and that's misleading and it never should have been in there in the first place. So bad on us as a city for adopting a general plan that makes this kind of process ridiculously hard.
Chairman Pecker, is it okay if I sit down?
Yes.
Unless you guys need me more.
No, thank you. Any other comments focusing back here on the, on the agenda item? Now, we are, we are not a public hearing today. I apologize for any confusion there. Yeah, we didn't advertise it as a public hearing and any comments from the commission, other thoughts?
So I, I've already stated it, I guess, but I guess I'll just say it again. Without a more developed development agreement, I'm not in favor of the R4. I'm also not in favor of the R4 because I think, you know, the plan does say single family. I think we can get the spirit of the single family, but we can definitely increase the density and I think we can do that like with the R1-8 zoning and the conditional uses that are allowed in there. But again, I would like to see a more exacting development agreement, a development proposal and development agreement for that. So that's where I sit. And Mr. Chair, wherever you want to go.
I agree with Wilf. I think I could be persuaded with the right development agreement that makes it more of a buffer.
Someone willing to put that into a motion or what? Are we at that point?
I have one comment regarding the development agreement.
Sure.
Yeah. So with the development agreement, I believe that there is a timeframe that's associated with those. And what began as part of that discussion and coming back from diligent city staff, it really was a nonstarter. And I'm not in the position to be able to have a development agreement. I only have 2.8 acres. I mean, I'm looking at a little, like a 450-foot road with a, you know, like another extension of 90 feet. The big developers, they have that plan and those, those deep pockets and the timeframe to make that happen. I'm just hoping for a rezone.
So you're saying that like with, if, let's say we went the R1-8 direction, you're saying just with the provisions that are already in the code?
I wouldn't be able to do a development agreement. I'm small potato, I'm.
Yeah, no, I understand, but, but you'd be able to probably do what you're thinking of doing because it would allow you to do like twin homes, something like that?
Possibly.
So there's a lot of flexibility with a development agreement, given particular circumstances. We don't have to put a timeframe in.
Yeah.
The development agreements that we, that I have done in my time here have been for mixed-use commercial projects and we have included a timeframe. There was one done prior to me with Ogden Clinic and they were supposed to be completed about two years ago, but it's the city's remedy. And we were fine with, with them taking longer than that was in the development agreement. We chose not to take that back to city council and amend it. So just to say that we don't have to put a timeframe in, a development agreement can include pretty much anything you want. It can include or exclude anything you don't want.
That's true.
I'm just trying to understand kind of this process to move forward. If we were to make a motion to recommend and voted on that, could someone else, depending on that outcome, make a, some sort of provisional motion as well? Just curious how that process works. If I were to make a motion to recommend, is that the, is that the end of this? Or, or if someone wants to make a more complicated recommendation, motion, is that still a possibility?
Well, your motion could be amended. It could be voted down and another motion made.
Right.
It could be a substitute motion. So there's a lot of things that could happen.
Do you want to add suggestions or recommendations on the recommended? That's what I'm.
And I think.
Well, I'm, I'm saying maybe we ought to just start with, and see where we're at.
All right.
So I would make a motion to recommend. I'll get a look at my paper here. Rezone for 1735 South, 550 West for Brian Carling.
To which, to what zone?
From A1 Light Agricultural District to R4, 1 to 4 Family Residential District.
So to clarify, the, the motion would be to send a recommendation of approval to the city council?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, we have a recommendation on the table.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, do we?
We can discuss.
Discuss?
I'll, I'll tell you right now, I'm not in favor of that without a development agreement.
I agree. I think it's the best.
Yeah, that's how I feel.
Any other thoughts or are you ready for the vote? I think we'll, we start the voting with you now, I think.
Name?
Uh, no. Uh, aye.
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 Tie vote.
Tie vote, so the motion fails?
Motion fails. So it's a denial.
Uh, no, our tie votes bylaws says of a motion before the commission receives an equal number of vote, votes and a subsequent motion on the matter is either not made or cannot achieve a majority vote, the matter before the commission shall be deemed denied.
Right, right.
So I would make a motion that we recommend to the council consideration of an R1-8 zone. Again, I would say that we need a development agreement with that so that we get a good look at what kind of housing could be proposed there. So that would, that would mean before it goes on to the council, it should come back here to the, to the planning commission for defining what that development agreement should entail. But that would be my recommendation.
I second.
And third.
I, I didn't hear what you said. What'd you say?
We're just seconding the motion.
Oh, you seconded the motion? I, I have, I have a procedural question, Wilf. Maybe you guys can help me. So is your motion to, to send a denial, recommend no on the R1-4?
Well, we just voted on that, so yes.
Oh, so you, okay, so our staff?
The R4 recommendation is a no.
We, we've recommended denial. We have a denial of the.
Well, it's because of it's a tie vote.
Okay, but.
With the development.
No, there, the recommendation of approval failed. That's, that's where we're at. Now, now Wilf has a, a.
A substitute motion.
Motion and a second.
Second.
No, a completely different motion. The first motion failed.
Well, okay, yes, an additional motion, yes.
No. Well, okay, the first, the first motion failed for lack of a majority. So the second motion now is.
The motion.
The motion, R1-8 with a development agreement. The staff would go work with Mr. Carling and bring that development agreement back again to the planning commission for further consideration. Is that correct? And so that had a, a, a motion and a second. So that would be now discussion for the commission and then vote.
So walk me through then what that would mean for the applicant. What, what would be the next step if we were to pass this? I mean, does it not go?
If that motion passed, the next step would be that Mr. Carling and I sit down again and see if, if there's a, a project that, that he can come back to the planning commission with that feels, I guess, comfortable with him and, and meets the, the recommendations of that motion. So it would be, we sit down, we look at the R1-8, look at the, how that would subdivide out and bring back some type of a concept that then would be included in a development agreement. And that, and that could be anything from, I mean, after Mr. Carling and I met the first time, we talked about some of the development agreement points would be if he was still willing to contribute that $30,000 for three lots to the, you know, efforts of the city trying to get employees within the community. We talked about having the easternmost lots, as Mr. Carling has said tonight, be single family so that it would better match the single family that fronts Sunset. So we, we would essentially sit down, have another discussion, try and meet the intent of what the planning commission is asking us to do. But again, at the end, this is Mr. Carling's application. And if he does not want to do that, then we're right back here in two more weeks or whenever the next meeting is with the same conversation from this evening.
We did make a recommendation on his original request. He could go, he could move forward with that to the city council. He could go with that on to the city council and see what they say. Because ours is just a recommendation.
That's right.
Yeah.
I think the counter recommendation was, in, in my view, was because our hands were tied. He wanted a yes or no vote and that's what he got from us. Was a, a no, but here's another idea from, from a few of us.
Well, that's, that's essentially what he got July 11th as well. So, I, I mean, from staff perspective, I think we're right back where we were a month ago. You know, be interested in hearing Mr. Carling's position on that, but.
Other than he does have, I mean, we did give him the up or down vote on the, on his original request. He could move forward to the council with that if he so chose.
Which was, which would just be no recommendation because it didn't pass.
Right.
Yeah. I think that was my question is could he move forward to the?
Okay, sorry.
No, I'm glad we got to that point though, that could he move forward to the city council if that were his choice rather than go through this process?
Yeah, so essentially that would be no recommendation from the planning commission. I wouldn't think that would be a neutral recommendation. It would just be because we didn't have an odd number here this evening. It's a tie vote.
So it doesn't go to the council then as a denial? It would still go?
Well, the motion doesn't pass. When it's a tie vote like that, it doesn't pass.
Right, so it's denied. So it's still, so I guess, I'm asking procedurally, does this not go to the council based on our recommendation tonight, which was a tie vote, which is a denial unless you, I'm just trying to make sure we're legally okay.
Yeah.
If, if this, it, it still should go to the council.
Yeah, it can't, it's up to Mr. Carling if he wants to take it.
Right, right. He could withdraw or he could say, I don't like this or whatever. But I, based on your motion, I, I like your motion, Wilf, and I, and the second, and I really like the development agreement. That's kind of the sweet spot I was talking about before. I was just concerned that whether or not we can make a motion on a petition that we have not seen, that has not been brought in front of us. So you're going to have to tell me, Melinda, legally if we're on solid ground or not because my experience has been that we can't vote on a.
Because he hasn't applied for that.
That's right, because there's actually no application for that. We're creating.
That's true.
We're creating the application, so I don't, I feel awkward voting on something he's not applied for. It seems to me what we should be doing is say this goes to council, but we would add, we would expand that, you know, recommendation from the council or planning commission as it failed, but the planning commission is in favor of an R1-8. Hey, council, we're in favor of an R1-8 with development agreement. That way he could still proceed to get to the council. If not, I think he actually has to reapply.
Oh, well, that's a good point.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
We just created a motion on a petition that doesn't exist.
Yeah, that's true.
That's all I'm saying. And I, I almost hate to do that because I kind of like to see this just quickly move forward, but legally you might have to check on that.
Couldn't we make a motion just so that the council knows we have a majority of people wanting to see that? Not, I mean, our motion would be to find out if we have consensus on the development I guess we could all just comment on the record and they'll see it in the minutes.
Yeah.
But I, I would be in favor of seeing a development agreement.
Okay. I mean, yeah, that's really what it boils down to.
I'm not sure what that means then. What, would the motion be in that case?
Yeah.
Can't we just add an addendum to our vote? Just add comments on what happened to say this is what the planning commission wants? Because I, I don't know.
This is what we would recommend.
Yeah.
I mean, we could express our opinion.
Yes, yes. We can tell them.
Rather than make a motion, we could say it's our opinion that we would look more favorably upon an application for an R1-8 with a development agreement.
Based on the discussion that was had, including input from the applicant?
Yeah.
And encourage him to come back with an R1-8 and work through with this with staff in a separate application or let the council act on it.
Yeah.
I think it's in council's hands now. We've said in essence, no with the tie vote.
Right.
But we can send a strong recommendation saying this is what we think. And I, feels like there's some consensus on the, I, in my opinion, it feels like there's some consensus here from this group on the R1-8. I don't know, we have to, what's everybody think? We can't really take a vote on it? Or I guess we could take, we could take a straw, a straw vote.
If I withdraw the original motion and maybe as a new motion.
Yeah.
Say that the, the planning commission would recommend that they would look, they would be willing to look at an R1-8 zone with a development agreement?
Yes. We send that forward with, with the motion from what happened tonight, you know?
And that's a recommendation we would make. It's really more to Mr. Carling than to anybody else.
Yeah. Yeah, Melinda will have to guide us through the procedural stuff, but I think it's important to call it out and go, well, do we actually have an application? We did make a vote.
And the reason I would do that as a motion is because, I mean, we can all talk about it, but until we kind of take an up or down to say whether that's really going to be something that'll fly or not.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. I think we can, we can make, we can act and create a motion as an action, it's, it's related to it. Sure we can, yeah. We just can't vote on an R1-8.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't exist, so.
Because it doesn't exist. That's a good point.
But yeah, let's, let's discuss and vote on your motion. Yeah, you're right.
Second the motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
I still third it.
Okay.
So just for the sake of clarity, what, what is the motion?
It's to, it's, it's a recommendation that the applicant consider, an R1-8 zone with a development agreement.
Development agreement.
Yep.
And that the, that the planning commission would be willing to take a favorable look at that.
Yes.
We're not approving it.
No.
Or recommending it.
Yep.
I think you can only make a recommendation to the city council.
Yeah.
I would be nothing involved with what your recommendation is. You have to recommend that.
It would just be a recommendation added on to our vote. A vote would recommend.
As an addendum to the action that we took.
I think so.
Procedurally, this, this second part doesn't go to the city council. This is something we're doing internally here. City council will hear about it. I'm sure Abby will report back what we, what we did.
If we ever let her go.
But that's not going on to the city council for any kind of action on their part.
No.
That's something we're just saying, we'd look favorably on something like that, but we need more detail.
Would we need that to be a motion then? I mean, it would be in the minutes.
I would say we're done.
I, I agree. And if everybody just kind of says, yeah, yeah, I think we're done. We don't really need, need to take a vote.
So my, my recommendation on a motion would be, based on what our bylaws say, you had a motion tied out. It's then says, so I don't think that means it was denied based on our bylaws. I think it means if another motion is made. I think it means if another motion is made and that ties out as well, then it is deemed denied. So you had a motion to approve that tied out 3-3. Somebody could motion to deny, see where that ties out, could be 3-3. And then we take that recommendation to, or, and then at that point, it would be a recommendation of denial. So I don't think the fact that this tied out based on our bylaws means that it's a denial. It's just not a recommendation to approve either. It's just the motion failed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can keep going?
No.
I mean, I'm just, is that what, is that what we're saying?
Well, I'm just saying that I don't think the first motion meant that it's a recommendation of denial.
Yeah, we're not sending any recommendation at this point.
Yeah, it's, it's no recommendation.
Right.
So we can make another motion, and we can continue action on the other end?
Sure, on the R4, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you could, you could make a motion, right, the initial motion was recommend approval. You could try recommend denial, and maybe somebody's changed their mind in the last 20 minutes. If not, then it, then it's a tie and a tie, which our bylaws said it's deemed denied. And the recommendation that would go to council would state basically by de facto, our bylaws say that it's a recommendation of denial, but it really would be...
No recommendation.
It's no recommendation.
No recommendation.
Yeah, I don't...
Let's not take that long.
Well, by law, we have to send a recommendation.
That's what it would be. I think that would accurately reflect how we feel about the issue.
I think so.
Because it's, it's tricky, and we have mixed feelings, and the recommendation is not strong. Yeah, and honestly, above and beyond what I just explained, I'm not legal counsel. So I, I don't want to sit here and say something this is, that I'm just not sure of, right? Like, I don't want to misguide the planning commission because I am not legal counsel.
Okay, so a question I have is, can we continue to consider another motion?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I mean, I...
So we're still on? Okay.
The first one was recommend approval of the R4.
Tie.
Then you started a second one, which is the R18, but we can't do that.
Can't do that.
We don't have that.
So that's crossed out, so now we either need a second vote or a second motion...
On the R4.
We don't have to continue, but if we want to, we can, and then whatever that result is, goes to council.
Well, look, look at the wording on this. It says, "If a subsequent motion on the matter is either not made..."
Which is what we're doing right now.
"...or cannot achieve a majority..."
Right.
"...the matter before, to the, before the commission is deemed denied."
So it's denied.
So if we don't make another motion on it, what we did already...
So we don't have to make another motion?
It deems it denied.
But we can.
Deems it denied.
We can.
Okay.
And it would deem that the motion is denied, not that the recommendation is denial.
Right.
I just want that to be clear. Are we comfortable then leaving it as it is and moving on?
No further motion?
Okay. No. Now, having done all that, once again, I would suggest that we might be favorable towards considering an R18 with the development agreement. That may be a possibility. We're not saying that would be approved or not. It's just a suggestion that I'm making.
And you're also welcome to go to the city council with R14 without our recommendation.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Carling is entirely within his purview to go to the council on the R4 with basically the motion that we made, and it did not pass.
We appreciate the time of people that have been here, of Mr. Carling, commissioners, you know, democracy's not always a quick process. We do have a few more agenda items that we'll try to wrap up here then. Approval of the minutes for July 11th. Anyone have any concerns?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Group vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Other matters?
Let's see, we have registered Commissioner Packer, Commissioner Young, and Commissioner Ellis for the APA conference down in Provo.
Oh, the Housing Summit?
Yeah, Commissioner Young and Ann are going to the Housing Summit. Did we get you registered?
No, I'm presenting, so I'm covered.
Okay, all right. So Commissioner Alred will be there presenting. I did receive an email yesterday, I believe, from the League of Cities about their Planner's Day, their annual conference. I will send that out to...
Have they got more detail on it now?
Uh, I, I...
Not yet.
I think, well, the email included that they confirmed a keynote, and it did have an agenda, but I didn't click on it, so I don't know what might be in line for that Planner's Day.
Yeah, I haven't seen any detail on it.
So, but I'll, I'll send that out, and it is a new budget year, so we're in good shape with registering. The planning commissions or commissioners are required by law to have four hours of training per year. We also need to do our open meetings training. So I guess my point is, is if there's interest and availability to go on that Thursday, it's downtown, and I'm not sure of the date, but that would be an eight-hour, basically an eight-hour day of training. I don't know, is it the 12th? September 12th?
12th and 13th, I believe.
Okay, so the 4th and 5th. So, check your calendars if you're interested in going on September 5th. I think we have enough budget, especially since there's not travel expenses down. I mean, we would do, I would think that your stipend could cover the travel down to Salt Lake, so we wouldn't have lodging or mileage.
What is it on the 5th, September 5th?
The League of Cities, their annual conference, but their Planner's Day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I definitely want to go to that.
Okay, so Paul, Rachel?
Yeah.
September 5th.
Katie, want us to get you registered as well?
I'll, I'll email you tomorrow.
Okay.
Check my calendar.
Okay, all right. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else. I think we will take this, Mr. Carling's application to the city council on September 5th.
Oh, that evening.
Yeah. So it's too late for the council's meeting next week, and there is a 5th Thursday in August, so that puts us a little further out than normal. Okay, yeah, and we, as of right now, we don't have any known agenda items for August 22nd. Our cutoff date, we do the Wednesday before the Packet Day, so we could get a conditional use permit in the next week and have a need for a meeting. And now that I'm back and Ann's acclimated, we need to start getting, I have a few text amendments that we want to bring forward, and we'll get those notices set up, and we're going to keep you busy.
All right. Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
All right, we are adjourned.